How are you doing? Good.
Happy New Year! This is a really good way to start second semester, isn't it? Being a Student Citizen of the Month, we're super proud of you. This is one of our favorite things that we get to do as a town council. I'm the mayor, Jen Daniels. We have our Vice Mayor, Victor Peterson, here. Councilmember Bridgette Peterson, Councilmember Scott Anderson, Councilmember Jared Taylor, Councilmember Eddie Cook in the hat, and Councilmember Jordan Ray. So, thank you all for being here. We do this in a very organized and efficient way. And the first thing we want to do is recognize our teachers and our administrators and any staff members from schools. So, if you are one of those individuals, will you please stand so we can recognize you? I would imagine the first week back is a little tricky. So, thank you all for being extra diligent in being here tonight. We sure appreciate you. We also want to make sure that we recognize our teachers especially. They have to fill out a form and submit it. They submit it usually to their principal, and their principal selects which one wins from their school. And then they send it on to the Town of Gilbert. So, you who are receiving awards tonight are part of a very select few who are doing amazing things. They usually don't tell us, as a council, what you've done. But whatever you're doing, keep doing it, okay? Because it means you have good character. It means that you're making good choices. It means you're doing your very best in school, and we are really proud of you as a community. I need some help. You look like you might be a good helper. Can he help me? Yeah. How old are you?
Same two. How old are you?
Two? You're so tall for two. Okay, we won't scare the two-year-olds. We want them to want to come back to the town hall. Would you mind coming up and helping us? All right, come on up. This is not scary. This is actually fun. Tell us your name.
Taylor.
What grade are you in?
Fourth.
Are you the honoree, or is your sister the honoree?
Me.
Awesome. We're excited. Okay, so we'll honor you in just a second. But we're going to let you choose all the teachers that submitted a form for a student today. Their names are on little pieces of paper in here. We're going to make sure one of those teachers gets a $25 Frost Gelato gift card. They might want to wait till it's a little bit warmer, but they could use it, right? Okay, so pick a good teacher. And if you pick your own, that's okay, too. Let's see who it is. And if they're not here, we'll make sure they get it. Ms. Gamboa from Cooley Middle School. Is Ms. Gamboa here? All right. Terrific. Thank you so much for your help. They're not always here, so it's fun when we get to shake their hand and tell them. All right, we'll go to the next slide. We do this in three groups. So, the first group is elementary schools A through J. That's Ashland Ranch Elementary all the way through Islands Elementary. If you attend one of those schools, and you're the honoree, we want you to come down here, and Councilmember Ray will help you get to the right spot. So, come on down. And the rest of you can just pay attention and see how we do this. So, Lauren Conrad. Lauren, raise your hand. Lauren is part of our digital team, so she's going to be taking a professional picture here, and that'll be on our Facebook page and on our... It's Tumblr, right? On our Tumblr... Oh, Flickr feed. And so, she's going to do that. But, parents, we want you to be able to get pictures, too. So, this is a good area to come down to. We'll do an individual picture with each kid and give them a plaque. And then we'll do a group picture with each individual group. And I promise we'll be done by seven. So, that's how we roll. All right, Vice Mayor, will you assist us?
Sure, Mayor. And, parents, you don't have to gather there just yet. You might wait a little bit, but just so we don't crowd the walkway too much. But I'll leave that up to you. All right, we will start with Bridges Elementary. First of all, guys, I'm going to do my best to say your names correctly. But don't be shy if you want me to say it again correctly, because I get it wrong. You can just let the mayor know, and we'll get it fixed up for you. All right, so from Bridges Elementary, Boston Langston. All right, from Burke Elementary, Rory Houlihan. From Centennial Elementary, Zachary Pyatt. From Chandler Traditional Academy, Addison Skousen. From Chaparral Elementary, Taylor Etta. From Christ Greenfield Lutheran, Ryan Lake. From Coronado Elementary, Brody Stojanowski. I'm rolling the dice on this next one. There's four consonants in a row. I don't know what to do with that, but we'll try. From EduPrize School, Christopher Zepkowski. Shepkowski. That's what you do with four consonants, just so you know. Shepkowski. Got it. All right. From Gateway Point Elementary, Annabelle Reynoso. From Gilbert Elementary, Deshaun Middlebrook. From Gilbert... Also from Gilbert Elementary, Anthony Davis. From Higley Traditional Academy, Jennifer Jacobs. And last from Group 2, but certainly not least, from Houston. Oh, we do. Okay, well, we'll see who this other one is. But from Houston Elementary, Emmy Platt. Should I just... Okay. We'll do this one a little different here. But Playa del Rey Elementary, Ethan Wright. And that's it for Group 2, Juan, Mayor. All right. Oh, go ahead. Oh, Group 2 is the rest of the elementary schools. So, please come on down if you're in elementary school. Come on down to the front here. All right. From Mesquite Elementary, Johnny Nguyen. From Neely Traditional Academy, Lila Kuns. From Oak Tree Elementary, Gabrielle or Gabriel Cardwell. Gabrielle. The third way that I didn't think of. Oh, Gabriella. I like it. From Power Ranch Elementary, Maximiliano Godoy. Max. All right. From Riggs Elementary, Lila Muller. From Santana Elementary, Thomas Mangum. From Settlers Point Elementary, Dion Trotter. From Spectrum Elementary, Reese Hirsch. From Valvista Academy, Brandon Dixon. Should be playing basketball, huh? From Valvista Lakes Elementary, Tegan Grenko. And that's it for Group 2, Mayor. And last, if you're in middle school or high school, come on down. For that matter, if you haven't been called on yet and came here for an award, it's a good time to come down, in case we missed you. All right. So, from Campo Verde High, Emily Bo. From Cooley Middle School, Emma Brown. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Brayden Cookinboo. From Gilbert High School, Kerrigan Partridge. From Greenfield Junior High, Sadie Stevens. From Higley High School, Gabriel Hill. From Payne Junior High School, Sidney Brayton. Bra... Bratton. That makes sense. Bratton. From Perry High School, Nicholas Megel. And finally, from South Valley Junior High, Naya Stewart.
That does conclude our Student Citizen of the Month for January. Thank you all for being here. We wish you guys the absolute best for 2018. So, have a great night. ..................................................................................................................................................................... Amy, will you help me?
It is now called the Nitro Live Ice Creamery.
Nitro Live Ice Creamery. It's where they mix science and ice cream. I don't think anything could go wrong there, so that's all. I don't think anything could go wrong there, so that's awesome. But we're very grateful for them. Thank you, that's perfect. And also Sal's Gilbert Pizza, just across the way, who are very great supporters of really everything we do in the town of Gilbert. They support our PD and a lot of staff, and also our amazing students from our Student Citizen of the Month. So thank you, sorry about that, and I apologize for missing that. Councilmember Ray is in charge of our scouts tonight, so we'll turn it over to you.
Mayor, we have a mix of Boy Scout and Cub Scouts here tonight. We've asked Austin Walker if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone would please stand.
Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, too.
Mayor, if it's okay, we'll have each boy introduce himself and their leader briefly. We'll start with Austin, and let us know what rank you are as well.
I am Austin Walker. I'm in Troop 481, and my rank is Tenderfoot.
Okay, great. This is, I'll let you introduce yourself and tell your rank.
My name is Bronson Heath. I am a wee below, and my troop is 56.
I'm Luke Raymond, and I am a wee below.
I am Porter, and I am a wee below.
I am Hayden, and I'm a wee below.
I'm Grant, and I'm a wee below.
We want to thank each of these boys and their leaders for coming down tonight and helping us out, and we encourage you to be good citizens in the community, both so you can get your badges, but also so that you can continue to make Gilbert such a great place to live. So thanks for coming down, guys.
At this time, we will have our invocation. The invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk, and interested persons should contact the clerk's office for further information. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Bishop Sean Housley of the Maplewood Ward of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Bishop?
Our Father in Heaven, we humble ourselves before Thee and give Thee thanks and ask Thee for a blessing. We are grateful for this special town in which we live. We ask for Thy blessing this evening as we meet for the proceedings which are before us. We are grateful for those here who serve and give generously of their time, our honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor and esteemed council members and town administration. We ask Thy blessings to be upon them and their families. We likewise express thanks and ask a blessing for those who educate our children and protect our liberties, our uniformed service members and first responders. We pray that as decisions are made, that future generations will be kept in mind, and that most of all, as citizenry, that we will follow after the example of Thy Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ, in being a little more tolerant, a little kinder, a little more patient and more loving. And these things we request in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Bishop. At this time, the clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Present.
A quorum is present.
On an annual basis, we have an individual from the council serve as our Vice Mayor, and this is my first year, I think, full year, yeah, of serving as mayor, and I have to tell you what a privilege it is to work with Vice Mayor Peterson. I have been blessed by his humility, his desire to serve. I think he might have one of the kindest hearts that I've ever seen in any individual, and I don't use those words lightly. I have great respect for him and for his love and care for our community. And so with that, we would like to make a special presentation. There's a certificate and also a beautiful pen that's been engraved as a commemorative for your year of service. You've done a terrific job. Thank you so much. Would you like to say anything?
I just want to say how honored I've been to serve as the Vice Mayor. And on the council, a lot of people know I'm not running for reelection. And really, what it all boils down to for me is how seriously I take this responsibility, and I think it deserves our absolute best efforts and time. And I have some goals that I just think are going to make it even harder for me to really give it the effort and time that it deserves. And so I want you to know how honored I've been to serve in this capacity and how grateful I am to have been able to serve the citizens of Gilbert. I want to thank Mayor Daniels. She is really an amazing thinker, and nobody can out-talk her, I'll tell you what. She can really, it's great. And you know what? That is so valuable that we have discussion and debate, because you really can't make good decisions without some discussion. I just really appreciate that so much, and I think we've done that. For the most part, we're not perfect people, but we've done that respectfully, and it's been a great hallmark, I think, of this council. That's something I very much treasure. So thank you, Mayor Daniels, for your service as well, and I thank the council also for letting me serve with them. So thank you, Mayor.
Great job, thank you. At this time, we do need to consider a nomination and selection of our Vice Mayor for our 2018 calendar year that will extend into January of 2019. And I look to the council for a nomination.
Mayor, I nominate Councilmember Bridgette Peterson to the office of Vice Mayor for the calendar year 2018.
Mayor, I want to amend the motion. I just can, I second the motion.
We have a sense of humor. We always say if we can't laugh at ourselves, no one else could either, so we try really hard to make sure that we don't take ourselves too seriously. But I think we do have a motion and a second. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Ray. All in favor, please vote. That motion carries at the 7-0 vote. We are glad you voted for yourself, Councilmember Peterson. We'll have you guys.
Do we have to switch now?
I think it might be appropriate if we do that now. Thank you. And we'll ask Councilmember Taylor to resume with Agenda Item 3.
Okay, is there someone here from Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life? Could you join me down here? Yeah, anyone that's come here for this particular recognition, if you wouldn't mind coming down here to the front. Oh, good, we got a great team here, thank you. You look like the team lead, so what I'm going to do is, we're going to come over here a little bit centered. And I just want to thank Mayor Daniels for letting me recognize the team for this wonderful, wonderful event. In Gilbert, as you know, every life matters, and this is a great initiative. We're just honored to have this recognition. But would you mind introducing yourself, the team, and then why we're here?
Sure, absolutely. My name is Katie McPherson, and this is our Project Connect Four team. We're actually a team of moms from the Chandler-Gilbert area. We are really passionate about our youth, and unfortunately, in our general area of about 12 to 15 miles, including Gilbert, we've lost several students to suicide. And so the Stand Up, Speak Up, Save Lives Conference is on January 16th, and we are representing Gilbert.
Well, and we are honored to join all the other communities in Arizona to issue a proclamation and give our wholehearted support on this. Let me read a couple of lines here, and then would love to present this to you. So it's for Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life, as you heard, January 16th. Encourage everybody to support this in one way or another. If you can't attend, then your homework assignment is to contribute. I'm sure they'll take some donations, but this is really important. Whereas Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Movement presents an ideal opportunity to help bridge the gap between our local community, government, and law enforcement in a positive way. And our local schools are facing unnecessary tragedies where warning signs are placed on social media or observed in persons but are not being reported as serious threats or cries for help. And that's really the crux of it. There's some suicides that can be prevented if we stand up and speak up, and that's really what this is. I read a statistic that about 39% of the suicides of our youth can be prevented by people standing up, speaking up, and intervening here. So thanks for bringing this to Gilbert and letting us join the other wonderful cities in Arizona to support this. And so we're honored, on behalf of Mayor Daniels and the Town Council, to support this and issue this proclamation to you. Could you join in recognizing their wonderful work with a big round of applause?
Councilmember Cook, thank you.
I'm actually entertained looking at Commander Bryce on that ladder. I told, I said I would spot for him, but I don't know.
Can we say OSHA?
Councilmember Peterson, I think you glued it on purpose, because you probably want to be the Vice Mayor for a long time there. Well, I have the privilege of serving as the liaison from the council for the Parks and Recs Board, and we have a fantastic presentation that I would like the Gilbert Parks and Recs Foundation Board, Joanne and Bill, to come up here, and the entire team can come up here. And we'll talk a little bit about something that happened wonderfully recently. You can stand right next to me, because this is like, we're going to use this mic. So Joanne and Bill, I'm going to turn this mic over to you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Cook. Mayor Daniels and council, all of our town staff and wonderful citizens, thank you so very much for coming out tonight. This is quite the moment for us. I'm going to introduce myself, let the whole team introduce themselves, and then we're going to give you a little bit of a description about why we're here and what we're doing. My name's Joanne McLaughlin, and I'm a board member of the Gilbert Parks and Rec Foundation.
I'm Bill Scalzone, I'm the Vice President of the Foundation.
I'm Barbara Guy, and I am on the Parks and Recs Board to the Town Council, and I am the liaison here.
John Christianson, I'm the treasurer.
Rene Meznik, board member.
My name is Brian Johns, and this is a small group of the board, by the way. There's how many total? Fifteen total board members on this.
I'm Rod Buchanan, Director of the Department, but also the Acting Chair of the Foundation, temporarily.
Robert Carmona, Deputy Director of the Department.
I'm Rocky Brown, the Business Manager for the Department.
Well, thank you. Back to you, Joanne.
Thank you so much, sir. The reason we're here tonight is we are your Parks and Rec Foundation Board of Directors. We were formed almost two years ago to serve for the town, and we do have a mission statement, we have a goal statement, we have a vision statement, and they look really, really great on a plaque. But the number one reason we are here, we are all citizens and residents of Gilbert who choose to serve. To serve is truly what our mission, despite all the other verbiage that comes behind the mission statement, to serve is what we do. All of us contribute to be on the board member. We contribute our time, our talent, and our treasure. So financially, we make a contribution every year. Every single one of us has incredible talents. This is probably the most dynamic, interesting, fun, and hard-working group I've ever worked with. So what we're here to do tonight is to present to you a check. I'm going to let Bill talk about what the check is, where it came from. But before I give it over to him, I want to make a special recognition. We couldn't do what we do without the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, without the town staff who support us. But with that support, we have the Director and Jen Loria, who is a Parks and Rec Coordinator, and of course, our Deputy Director, Carmona, and Rocky, who, they support us and do all the behind-the-scenes work, and they lift us up so that we can come out to the community and raise money and get awareness of our programs, so that we can give back to the town and fulfill our mission to serve. So we have an accomplishment we want to tell you about tonight, and I'm going to let Bill do that.
Thank you, Joanne. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm not used to turning my back on you, so... But I'm going to address the community out here. Recently, we were able to apply for a grant with the Gila River Indian Community. To do that, we had to provide part of the match, which we did through our foundation. As a result, we were able to obtain a total of $22,000. Now, that $22,000 goes to a program that is one of our priorities, and it's called the Gap Program, and that's for Gilbert Assistance Program. And the program is established by the Parks and Recreation Department to help provide fee assistance to families who have children 17 and under who live in Gilbert, or residents of Gilbert, who otherwise couldn't afford to participate in these outstanding programs. So this is a way for us to give those children a chance. To be eligible for it, and I wish all the kids were still here, or they would enjoy hearing this, they, all they have to do is apply, and they're judged or measured by the Higley and Gilbert School District Free Lunch Program criteria. If they're eligible for that, they're eligible for this. And as a result, if they're selected, they will receive $100 to be used to purchase services at the Gilbert Parks and Recreation Department and many of their fine and outstanding classes and programs. So tonight, we'd like to present this check for $22,000 as part of what we do for the town of Gilbert to help the community.
Well, on behalf of Mayor Daniels and the council and Rod's team, we thank you. And with that, can we have a round of applause? And we're going to have the mayor come down here to take a picture with you. Is that all right, Bill? Now, I want to say one thing. Joanne is probably the most passionate, energy-filled young woman as relates to Parks and Recs that I've ever known. She is out there beating the bushes and just, she is so excited about Gilbert Parks and Recs. It's unbelievable. Thank you for your enthusiasm for our community.
Sir, it is an honor. It is, it is an absolute honor, and I just, I'm so thankful that I get the chance to do it, and I hope to be able to do it for quite some time and to work with these amazing people. And look what, look at the mentor I have. How fantastic is that? And thank you so much for all your support. We couldn't do it without you.
Well, we have some big projects, as you know, coming. All right, so why don't we come this way, and we'll get closer in.
That is really incredible and pretty remarkable of lots, many people, many volunteers. Rod, would you do us a favor and report back on some of the students that are able to utilize some of those funds? I'd love to hear some of the stories of the youth that are able to have some experiences they might not otherwise have. Thank you, appreciate that. At this time, I look to our Vice Mayor Peterson. I don't even have to change how I say it, I just have to change how I spell it. Vice Mayor Peterson, thanks for making it easy on me. Do we have any communications from citizens?
Mayor, thank you very much. We do have two. One is Amy Lozano. If you'd like to come--
One is Amy Lozano, if you'd like to come down to the podium. And our great staff will give you three minutes on the clock. And then I'll have Joe Guusik for our next communications from citizens.
Hi, Mayor Daniels, council. I was here last month. I don't know if you remember me. And since then, I have spoken to many city officials, Jacob on the noise ordinance, and Lori, and Nancy Davison, and she referred me back to you. She said that you are reviewing that, actually, that it's been published, and what I'm requesting is beyond the scope of what she was told by you to do. And what I'm requesting is that section 4261, which allows the golf course to mow at all hours, it makes them exempt Greenfield Lakes Golf Course, I don't know if other golf courses are that in the city, for that to be changed. And I think I sent you an email, and I suggested for it to be removed because anytime we, the citizens or the residents call, they just say, "We're exempt." Now, they have made allowances, they've tried to change a little bit, and I will say that. But if it push comes to shove, they'll just say, "We're exempt." And our own HOA will also say, "We're exempt" because of that section 6261. So, excuse me, I'm not used to speaking in public. So, I, we opened an investigation, you know, because I've lived there in the same place for nine years, and it's never been an issue with one of your inspectors. And I've been made to understand that the golf course inspects itself. So if they say that the machinery is working, which is what the clause says, then it's working. So basically, they police themselves. I don't know for a fact if that's true or not. That's what I've been told. So, I'm asking that that section would be removed and that they would have hours, say, something, whatever, from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM that they don't use machinery so that they would disturb the residents. And I'm also asking for this to be put on the agenda or however we can get this going so I don't keep spinning my wheels as well for the next agenda. And I think that's it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Amy. We appreciate that. Because it's not an agendized item, we cannot actually have a public discussion about it just for our open meeting law. And so we'll make sure that we have probably some individual dialogue. I did receive your email, and I think others probably did as well. So we'll make sure we have some individual dialogue with you.
No, I just sent it to you, I haven't...
Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you, Mayor Daniels.
Thank you, Amy.
Mayor Daniels, fellow town council members, all Gilbert staff, residents, and guests of our beautiful community. My name is Joe Guusik, and as I always say, I'm your lovable, slightly annoying American, I'm your education Lorax. First of all, I want to wish all of you a happy new year, and I wish you much success and your success is our success. And I always love to live in this community, as sometimes some people have asked me, "Where would you want to live?" It is here, just by the example of the town, the Park and Recs group being so kind and gracious, not thinking of themselves, but thinking of somebody younger than them, giving those children an opportunity and finding that the ways to do it very creatively and being so kind-hearted. I wanted to share with you this tonight. As we go into 2018, we always have challenges, and those challenges we have to take head-on. The Great Recession left some of us ahead and some of us behind. I'm going to share some of the numbers with you. In 2009, our state had 6.3 million people. Today, we have 7 million people. Our unemployment rate was 11.2%. Today, it's 4.3. The town of Gilbert was 200, 217 citizens, and today roughly about 247,000. I looked at the CAFRA reports 2009 and 2007, and I saw your revenue went up. It went up quite a bit, in proportionally to that. I'm sure that the inflation was kept with, in check the whole time that you had that time. What I want to share with you is where our schools have been left behind. I took the JBLC report, and I calculated where they sit. The cumulative effect to them, if we were to fund them at inflation during that whole time, was $7 billion. So I appreciate the continuous times that you recognize our teachers and all that stuff. But please remember to support our schools just beyond having a ceremony. If we didn't surpass those bonds and those overrides, imagine how much farther we'd be behind on inflation. There's a role for mayors and town councils to play in the state of Arizona, and it's to lead up. Lead up to our governor and let him know that we need to help our schools and make sure those great employees are always recognized and retained. At the end of the day, as I tell our schools this, I don't ask you to spend too much or spend too little, invest the right amount. I'm going to ask you to do the same. I know there's big projects on the horizon, and we need to be wise. But we need to be wise and fair to everybody in the community. And I ask you to think about those schools when they're not left, they're left behind in the Great Recession. As I always say to you, thank you very much for what you do. I'll keep communicating, I'll keep sharing so that we can be the very best that we can be and be a community of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. We appreciate your voice when it comes to education in Gilbert. At this time, we will move to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, with the big change-up this evening, I didn't have a chance to ask all of the council members, does anyone have anything to pull off of the consent calendar?[1302.11][1302.11](LAUGHTER) Councilmember Cook, no. I'm seeing no from everyone. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the consent calendar, removing item number five, approving items six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Just for clarification, Lisa, it looks like we weren't able to swap names. So, we'll make a note as we move forward that if you're looking at the board and there's any discrepancy on votes, which there wasn't that time.
I think my name is resisting moving to the left. I really do.[1340.98][1340.98](LAUGHTER) I can't sit left of center. What's going on here?
That's what it is.
I feel better already. All right. We will move to the public hearing items. All items will be heard at one public hearing. Are there any requests to speak on the, by the council on any public hearing item? Okay. So we've actually continued already item number 14 to our February 15th meeting. So what I will do is I will open the public hearing on agenda items 12 and 13. I will close the public hearing on those agenda items and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve items 12 and 13. Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote as well. On agenda item 14, do we need to have a formal motion, Chris, in order to continue that to February 15th? It was done ahead of the meeting here.
No, Mayor, you don't.
Thank you. That moves us to administrative items. Any report from the council on boards, commissions, or committees? Please.
Mayor, if I may, just give a brief report just before council tonight met in the annual meeting with the Public Facilities Municipal Property Corporation. It's a mouthful there, but they have an annual meeting. They don't meet a lot, but it is fun to see the projects that we approved the prior year. And we got a report from the police department on Station Number Nine going up, the slabs down, and that's going to be a great public safety enhancement for those residents in South Gilbert off of Higley Road. So, really looking forward to seeing that come online, and progress seems to be going well, and things have been falling in place there nicely. Just wanted to report that out to the town, that there was, that was positively received by the corporation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other? Councilmember Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. We had our Parks and Board meeting this Tuesday, this last Tuesday, and they shared the attendance of our repairian lights at night, which was on, was it repairian?
After dark.
After dark, there we go. I keep on thinking it's zoo lights, that's on my mind. The attendance that we've had in the past, you know, per day, was done like per hour. There were thousands per hour. And I asked the staff, and Rod can share, maybe can comment on this, but all those lights that they put up was done with, I think, four individuals. I am just... Now, Rod, you're just too lean. So, you have my permission, they asked Patrick for some additional help there. I know Patrick is going to say, "No, I don't know what he's talking about here." But anyways, it was, it was, I mean, that team was phenomenal to do all those lights for those nights, it was just phenomenal. So anyways, I just want to share that with the council, that it was extremely, extremely successful. Obviously, our residents and families, they loved the experience, and it was just fantastic.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Any other from council? All right. I think they want to have an agenda item if you want to add to budget, so we'll fast-forward through that. From communications, there's a report from town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I would like to remind the executive team that your shameless attempts to get the council to do your bidding to request additional staff members will not work. So, we can refrain from that. I wanted to show two slides that show some great stats from our 311 app that we launched. I know that we talked about it recently, some of the great results and performance we've seen, but it really is impressive for our first year of having it in operation. Some, real quickly, we had almost 3,000 requests opened. We had 2,300, almost 2,400 acknowledged, 2,900 closed. The average days to acknowledge, 1.2, and the average days to close, 9.4. Really, really impressive for our first year in operation on this. The organization and all the departments and employees have really done an excellent job embracing this and working to turn things around quickly for our residents. If we could go to the second slide, and this is the requests by category, and our largest is streetlight outages or malfunctions. Second is traffic enforcement, illegal parking, and third is bulk trash uncontained out too early. So, it's a great tool for us to also understand where we're seeing issues that we can also be a little bit more proactive with in watching our streetlight outages or directing patrols to look for areas of high incidence of illegal parking situations. So, a great job to everybody. Derek Konofsky and our digital government team heads this up, but it's really an effort by all the departments, especially huge kudos to Jessica Marlowe in our Public Works Department that handles the bulk of what you see there. That is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Patrick. We appreciate that. Any report from council on current events? And then I just have two things I'd like to mention. One is, you may have recently heard about a Skybridge announcement. The governor has been discussing it over the last several days. It is an agreement with an organization called Skybridge. It's a Mexican company that actually has their headquarters right here in Arizona. And what they are doing is developing 300 acres of land, including putting in $22 million worth of infrastructure at our Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. While that airport is located in Mesa, we are a member agency, which means we own a portion of that airport. So this is very exciting for us from a regional perspective, but also a statewide perspective. We are bringing what's called Unified Cargo Processing to that location, which means that any goods that are traveling from the United States to Mexico can clear customs here at the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. So we will have Mexican customs officials located at Phoenix Mesa, which is a huge opportunity for our region and for Gilbert. So I just wanted to report out on that. We did sign what's called a master development agreement with them. There are still several more steps that have to take place in order for us to see that come to fruition. But the first major hurdle has been, has been accomplished, and we're very excited about that opportunity that we will have. So, with that, we'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight and paying attention to the work of our community. We have a lot of work to do, 2018. I'm very optimistic about 2018. And we have a great team on our council, as well as a tremendous staff team. We look forward to working closely with you as we further the goals of our community and also work hand-in-hand with our residents to make Gilbert the absolute best place that it can be. So with that, I will say, "Meeting adjourned." Thank you. And, see you tomorrow. Fifty, but we'll keep saying 50 just because it's fun.